Focused on this. All right. So, these are all the leaks in the pipe here. Here's the restrictions. And all those fall into what I call the overflow pan here and get recycled and back at the start. And not all those people repeat. And even the ones that drop out, some say, "I ain't gonna do that no more," and so on. But we're recycling that much, plus whoever else gets into it. So, how do we solve that? That means resources. Most of it's people, and not equipment, is people to do these jobs. So, I introduced a bill here for six years will have a 3% sales tax. And it's amazing the amount of money that produces. But I wanted it for six years. I want only the voters can approve it, and only the voters could extend it if at the end of six years you all decided, "I'm very sure I won't be in this job. Maybe I won't even be around." But that's gonna leave we, the voters, in charge. So, originally, when I put this together, I had half of the receipts from the sales tax, the go-to fight and crime and public safety and all that that means, and the other half with a property tax relief. Now, I understand from Ethan's administration that there's more money there than I think. So, I'm changing it to two-thirds go to property tax relief, one-third will still lots of money to work on this. Any money that they don't spend on public safety, defaults to their property tax relief, and what else? That's all. I think I've told you more than I know, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Fred. So, I am next up. I have offered along with assembly members Forreston Martin, Austin McDavidson. The second of the three proposals that we will be considering is a 5% alcohol sales tax proposal. And much like Fred's, it is a tax to target a problem. And the problem that we're dealing with, very similar to Fred's, we're dealing with the public safety and homelessness issue. So, this tax is gonna be dedicated to three things. First is public safety. Second is sexual assault, domestic violence, and child abuse. And then, third, substance misuse treatment and behavioral health. So, in each of those three areas, we work pretty closely with the health department, with the police chief, and the fire chief, and a lot of experts to determine what might be the most added value to the work being done in the community so that we can reduce some of the stresses in our current system. And actually, much like Fred, Jason stole one of my lines as well. And that was around the core team. So, that's one of the things that we are hoping to enhance and increase through a 5% alcohol tax, is increasing that core team. Right now, just one person is saving $500,000. Imagine what it could do with four to five people. And then, if you look at sexual assault, domestic violence, like Fred said, we're leading the nation. We need to do something about that. And the state hasn't stepped up in a way that it should on this issue. So, if the state's not gonna step up, then we need to step up. And then, last, we know that there is a huge issue with substance misuse treatment in our, in the general population, right? A lot of people kind of like to talk about that as a homelessness issue, but it's really not. It is a general population issue, and it isn't epidemic, and we need to deal with it. And thankfully, we have a host of community partners that have stepped up to work on this issue. So, we have a variety of for-profit and nonprofits that generously gave $40 million over the next five years to deal with this issue, and a host of different issues regarding homelessness and substance treatment. And we also had, through the MLMP sale, about roughly $15 million set aside on the capital then to begin building the Anchorage or Alaska Center for Treatment. And so, we have, we're stepping up. We have a variety of for-profit, nonprofit partners stepping up, asking the state to step up. And a lot of people, you know, ask us, "Why haven't we done this sooner?" Well, we've been asking the state to do this for years now, and they haven't stepped up to the plate. So, we can't wait anymore, so we need to. And so, that's what part of this 5% alcohol sales tax is going towards, is helping out the operations of this facility. 5%, we're looking at anywhere between $11 to $15 million annually. Those three dedication sources are gonna be put into our charter so that the voters can feel relaxed and know that we cannot use them for anything else outside of those three sources. And if the assembly wants to change that, we have to go back to the voters and ask them to change that and to amend our charter again. If in the future, one of these isn't an issue, and we wanna use that 5% to fund public transit, as a random example, we have to go back to the voters and ask the voters for approval for that. So, I guess to wrap up, you know, this is a tax to target an issue, and the issue on top of that is largely driven by alcohol. So, it all makes sense to me, and we narrowly lost this battle in April. But the reason we narrowly lost it is there wasn't confidence in what it would be used for, used for, and how it would be used. And we've come back, and we've addressed those issues, and we hope in the coming months that it will be implemented on that, and hope that it gets approved in April. If we do, we're on the ballot. Thanks, everyone. And John will be next, or Meg.
I'm Angelis. I am working with Mr. Wilderson, or John Wilderson, who you guys all probably know really well, on a, as per in our substitute version of the alcohol tax. And what it does is it has a few requirements that we think are really important. It removes the dedication for public safety. And it's not because we don't love our police officers or believe in being in public safety, but we want it to be a bit more targeted. And we think that in targeting the areas we do wanna focus the tax on and have it dedicated for, we'll realize public safety savings, and there'll be a release out for our fire department and our police department. And we also, so the revenues will be used in really in three buckets.
Can we speak up?
Sure. Substance abuse and mental health treatment, substance abuse and mental health treatment and homeless services. So, those are the things that are currently having a drain on our public safety.
Are currently having a drain on our public safety, and we think that they will, we'll see impacts, positive impacts of public safety without dedicating tax towards them. We also anticipate that the tax revenues from this version would provide funds for a recovery center like the Alaska Center for Treatment, but importantly, revenues may not be used for more than half the cost of construction or operation, particularly for those assets that we may create for substance abuse and mental health treatment that are really statewide resources. So, the Alaska Center for Treatment will likely be a statewide resource. We don't think municipality should fully shoulder that burden. Similarly, if a later for mental health facilities, if a crisis stabilization center or something else came online, be a statewide resource. Again, municipality will benefit from it and want to contribute, should fully shoulder the burden. And so, this really lets us contribute, but not be the only payers. The tax rate will initially be at 2% with a maximum of 5%. So, you never go above 5% without a change, you know, of both of the people again. But why it starts at a 2% is we want to make sure we have uses and we're ready to go so that we can report our performance measures on exactly how we utilize the money. So, starting at that 2%, because like the Alaska Center for Treatment may not be ready for additional revenues beyond what I did from the MLMP sale for a couple of years. And the other great thing is, when we decide to raise that tax, we're gonna have to come and tell you why, why we're raising that level, what's that justification. It retains the three-fifth charter requirement, so 60% vote. The date of levy authorization is moved back to, actually, it's February 1st. It was January 1st in the original version, but as John says, we don't wanna be a buzz till one year's. His joke, not mine. And requires an annual report of the tax revenue collected. It's very transparent. It lets us get a report. It's a public document. You can see where we're spending the money. You can ask us those questions. Is this working? Is this doing what you said it was going to do? And so, the reasons it's different than last year's proposal is it's just, it's really quite more targeted, and it really gets to these issues we're seeing in the municipality that are really draining and taking up so much of our energy, but in a way that is really quite targeted and strategic. Thank you.
All right. So, at this point, I'm gonna ask some of the members to come join us up front, and feel free to move around here. All right. So, for folks who don't know me, my name is Felix Rivera. I have service in the charity and assembly. Before we begin the public testimony part of our town hall today and discussion portion of our evening, I would remind everyone that you'll have two minutes and any questions asked, and feel free to ask a lot of questions. At the town hall yesterday, we asked, members of the public asked a whole lot of questions, and we went through and answered each and every one of them to the best that we could. So, questions will be answered after the public testimony, so we'll keep track of all of them. And then, is anyone here from country, please? Okay, so they're not here, be here, but they're not. So, we'll go ahead and get started. I will go ahead and hand this mic off to anyone who wants to get a certain.
Oh, let's just, I don't even like to go up there. My name's Lee Ellis. I'm president of Girdwood. I'm also the president of the Brewers Guild of Alaska and president of Midnight Sun Throwing Company. I just wanna say that we are in support of some of the member Dyson's plan. We believe a broad-based tax is the correct answer to this issue. There's numerous issues that we have with the alcohol tax, and I'll go through that right now, and I just wanna make you guys aware of this. Number one, we have a huge issue with McDowell report, which is what these numbers are based on as far as costs to the state of Alaska for alcohol and the impacts of alcohol in the state. We already paid a sizable amount in excise tax that was worked out back in 2003. Those costs were supposed to go to alcohol treatment. How the state has allocated that money, unfortunately, is no longer going to alcohol treatment, and we understand that. Asking alcohol on the street to pay for social bills that include drug abuse, criminal activity, and things like that is unfair. It's really important for us to be able to employ people. We employ a lot of entry-level people, and I can guarantee you, the sizable taxes on our industry are going to cut out a lot of those low-skill entry-level jobs. We definitely agree with the idea of working on treatment programs, increasing policing, and a lot of the issues you guys wanna address, and we see a broad-based tax as the correct answer to those issues. So, yeah. The other thing that we see is a continuum of care is critical to solving the homeless issue. Not only that, I used to work with the social worker Beans Cafe. Putting people through alcohol treatment is one very small part to getting them off the streets. So, a broad-based tax is gonna be what's necessary in order to fully fund these programs, help people get off the street, and also deal with criminal issues. All right? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Glutzel. I'm attorney general. I also hope to do the advocate vote for an alcohol act. It puts the burden on the hospitality industry. The revenue that would be lost would be either employees lost or loss of increased cost or revenue for them. You may not realize, but the hospitality industry is probably one of the most philanthropic industries in our state and other countries. In the last couple of years, I've been involved with a group of restaurant tours. We have raised money for Kids Kitchen, Children's Lunchbox, Beans, Covenant House, and here, Challenge Alaska. It's a direct tax of our industry. I understand the need for tax increases, and I'm all for broad-based tax increases. The other day, I was looking to go on vacation in Mexico, a place I thought I'd go, and thought how dangerous it was. I think you said we're the 67th largest city, was that correct? We're usually, if you go online, ranked 13th to 16th post danger city. That's what people have to hear, and that's everybody's responsibility. It's not the hospitality industry.
I'm Delton with the Odom Corporation, and, well, here we are again, eight months later, we had a vote on an alcohol tax, and it was shot down. That was the ninth time we had an alcohol vote for taxes, and I don't know, you know, when the group's gonna start to think about some other way of combating homelessness and raising some funds, like there's other ideas out there. I think the 2020 group has a good idea, but that's too bad they're not here today. I have a product-based tax proposal that they're putting around, but it doesn't, I guess, is gonna get traction this program. So, my industry is gonna fight this tax, and so, it looks like we're probably gonna be the number 10. If I'm wrong, I think it's a waste of my time, a waste of everybody's time fighting about an alcohol tax, and you should get on and do something else. I understand, you know, when MLMP sold, it's about $1 million. So, you know, what are you doing with that money out there? There's another $40 million that's been raised by the nonprofits and private entities. So, it seems to me that you, fellows, that do have, the gals that do have some money to offer to perform and deal with. I was born and raised in this town. It's very unfortunate to me to take care of our town, make it a livable and a good place to raise our families in. And I agree, something needs to be done. I think the best way to do it is with a broad-based tax. So, I won't take up any of the time.
I'm Ford Vaughn, local resident here at Girdwood. As part of the alcohol tax, isn't it true that the alcohol industry would just in turn raise the prices on the products? So, you saw like the industry itself is sheltering it. It's the consumer that will ultimately feed the price. I work part-time as a cashier at the store, and believe me, people love their alcohol, and if it's jack enough price a little bit, I think they're gonna pay for it. And the other thing is, when you say it's sales tax, are we talking about tax in our Amazon purchases?
Thank you.
I guess I'll ask, my name's Jerry Fox, and I'll ask just a couple of questions. For Fred's proposal, does that raise the tax cap, or does the tax cap stay flat?
It raises the tax cap, but the figures I've seen, it looks like every homeowner is gonna get $300 to maybe $750 less off the property tax, 'cause more than half of what we raised in the sales tax will be go to reduced property taxes.
But it will still raise the tax cap?
Yes, but only for the six years. We like it, we could do something else, but it goes away.
So, yeah, I don't think that's entirely accurate, Fred. I don't know if Jason knew that.
I'll just clarify, it does not, the tax cap number is calculated based on the five different things that I went through earlier. What it will do is that $291 million number that I said we raised from property taxes, so say, what Fred's does, say it raises $91 million that goes towards property tax relief. What it would do is that large $377 million number would stay the same, but the property tax number would go down to $200 million, and all the other items that I had down there in terms of how we build the rest of the bucket, his sales tax revenue would go down there.
So, overall, the revenue stays the same?
On that, on that portion, on the two-thirds that he's talking that goes towards property tax relief, yes. He is also saying one-third of his sales tax would go above the tax cap, that would be additional spending.
And so, then, what Felix is doing, that would also raise the tax cap?
No.
It's a bump that's outside the tax cap.
It's outside the tax cap.
Yes, and then, generally, thank you for those questions. So, I'm keeping track of all of it, and after all of the questions, we'll go into that. So, I'll talk a little bit about what we mean when we say new revenue.
Okay. My last question would be, how does a tax the tax gap for John and then opposing? And then, my last question real quick at the end would be, you know, what happens after six years? These things go away, where are you gonna find your funding? You know, I don't seem, I don't understand that. But you could talk about that. I guess the question is the answer will come later.
Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Betsy Kinnell, and I'm curious with the sales tax, what things does it cover? Does it cover broken?
In a sense, in essence, everything that food staffs pay for, all medicines, transportation to hospital, legal expenses are all exempt from the sales tax. Everything that we know of that really hits very low-income people is exempt. And a good question.
My other question is, I'm not quite sure why, if the sales tax instead of a top property tax, it seems weird to me that you would tax something so that you can then save taxes somewhere else.
We'll come back to that afterwards. Good question.
Thank you. Anything else?
Does the sales tax, will that reduce property taxes for Girdwood? We're not part of APD services, so we're separate from that. So, we tax ourselves for police, and would this just be directly associated with those who aren't paying for APD services? But I guess with that, would we still be paying the tax and not getting a return from it?
Any other questions or comments?
I got, you know, one for Fred is, I think that's a good question, whether that 3% applies to internet sales, because that 3% sales tax has the potential to handicap Anchorage retailers.
It does.
And then, the second is, you know, I voted for the alcohol tax last time, and 5% is gonna change my spending habits, but I think you need to come up with a better sales pitch, and I don't think alcohol pays its fair share. I think we can quantify costs that, you know, even if it's extra costs that we need downtown on Saturday, Friday, and Saturday night, I think we could do some of those things that maybe help the sales.
Yeah, I, Randy Brandon on a local, my first thought when I see taxes put out from like the Anchorage Assembly or any taxable entity is that, first of all, is there any finite amount of money that would fix our social problems? Now, to say that, I think knowing the answer is no, because no matter how much taxes are raised, you're never gonna solve the homeless problem. You may make a dent in it, but you look at cities like Seattle and stuff that spent a billion dollars, nothing has happened. It's gotten worse. And it just continues, in my estimation, to just be throwing money at something hoping that it works sometime. And that's my own opinion of taxes in general, is that those revenues seem to be, they always wanna come in, there's never enough money. I don't care if it's for schools or homelessness or whatever, there's never enough money. And maybe at some time, we have to think of government like our own personal entity and say, you know, we have to have a budget, and we can't overspend what we're not making. And I think that's a responsibility that government has to really take to heart, and not just say, "Okay, we're gonna go back and try to float another tax." As far as the alcohol tax, I am kind of offended because it wants to tax me for something that I didn't do. It wants to go towards people who are abusing alcohol, which is not me. And so, why am I taxed for something I didn't do and had nothing to do? I mean, it seemed like a very unethical thing to do, but, you know, that's the way it works.
I think we have to look at that the same way as we look at, I don't have a child in school, so why do I have to support schools? I feel strong, and I don't need, I mean, I understand that taxing alcohol more is difficult, but having had a son that needed the treatment center that we don't have, where we did a cliff road, so we need to do something, please.
Can you say your name, please? Oh, ma'am.
Susan. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Susan Opalka, O-P-A-L-K-A.
Rebecca Reichman, I just wanna ask if either of these two alcohol taxes does pass, will Girdwood receive some of those monies and services in our community? Will some of that come back to Girdwood since we're paying for it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
So, Mike Edgington from Girdwood. One thing I think was really inclusive, basically, Jason's presentation, is the cost of the school district. Like, most cities around the country, the school district is probably a key function that we get representation of the amount of money spent there.
That's actually the bulk.
Sorry, that's the bulk of our, the school district, that was in the initial presentation. That's actually the majority of what we pay tax for in this community. My second comment, I suppose, is that, I know generally, sales tax is a regressif. They tend to, people with low income spend most of their money on things, big with higher incomes, invest, spend it on things regardless of taxes. So, in general, I'm not a great fan of sales tax, but I think the exceptions, the things which are excluded, and who's reducing the effect of alcohol anyway, but it reduces some of the money in the other two. And the other comment I have, which is, I'm kind of confused about, from the three representatives of the, sort of entertainment industry, the alcohol industry, is my understanding is, they're supporting the 3% tax on alcohol and many other things as well, but not supporting 2% tax on alcohol, which to me doesn't make sense. I understand why you prefer, you know, why it's 3 is better than 5, but 3 would be better than 2, it makes sense to me. That's it.
Okay. Can I ask that real quick? Sure. So, what we would like to see is a substantive change to what's going on, a 2% alcohol tax. And again, I'm coming from the social work field. If you wanna make a real dent, if you wanna make a real change, you've gotta have cliff road as one small part of that. You've gotta have housing, you've gotta have policing, you've gotta have social workers, you've gotta have people on the street, you've gotta have medical care. So, anything that is not going to consequentially deal with this problem is going to result, and as it has with the state, with those tax monies being reallocated to something else. So, I mean, that's what we've seen, right? We put in all of our excise taxes that have gone to the state, and then we're not seeing that money come back and deal with treatment in Anchorage. So, if we're going to deal with this problem, we wanna see it dealt with broadly, and also it's not fair for the alcohol industry to deal with drug addiction treatment, and opioid addiction is a huge part of this problem, and we are not a contributor to that issue. So, these, the other thing, I'll say this one last time, alcohol is a symptom, it is not the cause of why most of the people on the street, and 99% of the people I've worked with on the street did not come from Anchorage. So, this is a broad issue. These are issues with mental health, these are families, these are people that have drug addiction issues. It's not just our responsibility, it's the entire community's responsibility to deal with this issue. Thank you. Anything else?
Hi, my name's Steve Girdwood, and I'm also a local here. I was curious, I've heard of others, I've heard of others in Alaska that have a sales tax for out-of-state, considering success, if that's gonna consider.
Out-of-state?
Yeah, so for listeners.
Do you think you can just tax your, like?
Pretty much.
Okay.
That's your food, Charlie, please. Tax the other ones. That's the same.
Thank you.
You just get the other guy.
Yes, sir.
How do we know the revenues, I mean, my surprise, how do we know the revenues generated by these taxes go to these programs are great, but how do we know that the funds that are already going through these programs aren't going to be cut from the unit to spend somewhere else? I mean, it's easily done, oh, we have to dedicate these, but we could pull these ones back out of that account to spend them somewhere else.
The quick answer is it's going to be audited and it's a part of my bill and it's audited by an independent, nationally recognized auditor.
But you could steal, but you could steal all of those funds.
Move them somewhere else.
Anyone else? Okay, so if we're done, I'm going to go through, yeah, go ahead.
Mike Davidson from Gertwood. Just a question I asked, and it's more of a process question, right? So I hear everybody in the room, for the most part, saying that there's some support for trying to fix things and I hear a lot of people saying there's support for taxation to try and address that, right? I guess my question is, is the Assembly only going to put forward one of these proposals to the voters? And if they put forward two proposals, I guess the question would be what happens if they both pass, although my fear would be they both fail.
Good question. Anything else?
Just, you mentioned the 2020 proposal was floating around as well, is there any chance that could be on the bill or what would be the mechanism for that?
Okay, all right, I'm going to go ahead. Back to Tom. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to go through most of the questions and I'm going to end with clarification on some of the statements made by members of the alcohol industry. I feel like some of those need to be clarified. So first. The first question was what are we doing with the MLMP sale? Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So as, as someone mentioned, hopefully by the middle of this year, we will have the sale of MLMP approved by the RCA and completed. What are we doing with the essentially $1 billion sale? About $515 million of that is going to go directly to paying off all of the debt that we have associated with that, so that we no longer have any debt associated with MLMP. And then there's a small bucket of some other areas, but essentially, I think the core part of the question is what amount of money will the municipality essentially receive from that? And the answer to that question is roughly $230 million will be what municipality has essentially free and clear. And I just remind people that when we put this in front of voters, we said we could do one of two things with it. One, we could pay off municipal debt that we have, and that's still an option, or number two, we could put all of it into the, or a portion of it, into the municipal trust fund that I mentioned earlier that we created about 35 or 40 years ago with the proceeds of the sale of the Anchorage telephone utility. The current 2020 budget that was passed and approved by the Assembly assumes that all $230 million of that is put into the municipal trust fund. So what does that look like? Over the next couple of years, the trust fund as a result of that will likely double. So the number that I was talking about earlier that we spin off every single year for general government services, we would expect to see an increase of that of roughly twice what we receive. And I believe this year's number was about $6 million that was spun off from the money that's currently in the municipal trust fund.
Let me just add something to that, too, is this is not found money. This money effectively just replaces municipal assistance revenue share that's been cut over time. So this is not new money for us. This is, fills a hole in the state's left system.
And the next question was regarding the $40 million, and I think it was assumption made that that was going to be going into the city budget and that's actually not correct. So the $40 million, those four property, not property partners that I mentioned earlier, in the end, they're the ones that are going to decide what to do with their money and they're working closely with both the municipality and the Anchorage Coalition on homelessness and with the state as well, trying to get a sense of what we're planning on doing so that that $40 million isn't used as a repetition of what we are doing, but instead is used to fill the holes in the system and is used to enhance and build up the system. So I guess to repeat, that's not going into the budget of the municipality, that's something that really they are managing and working closely with us to do so. I think the mayor answered the question a little bit earlier about the online sales tax, would Dyson's version include online? The answer is yes. In regards to new revenue and how this affects the tax cap.
So you cannot tax internet sales unless you have a general sales tax. You couldn't, for example, do a standalone internet sales tax, you have to have a general sales tax in order to do that.
So in regards to new revenue and the tax cap, so I'll speak to my proposal and I'll let the others to speak to their proposals. So for my proposal, the five percent is outside of the tax cap, which is why I say it's new revenue, because if it was inside the tax cap, it wouldn't be new revenue, it would just offset property taxes and we'd basically be shuffling the board around, we wouldn't be getting anything new, we wouldn't be able to do anything additional to what we're doing right now.
Oh, clever. But he said, I'll add something, too, is one of the questions is with the state, the state can't dedicate funds, we can. And the way these, all three versions are written, it will be in charge of fundamental government document, this is what the money will go toward. So the question of, so that's very, is very different from the state. Now, the question on how do we know, replace funds for our spending on, and I think that's a great question, that's one of the driving forces on taking public safety out of the uses of the alcohol tax and the S version, is because it gets kind of fuzzy, you know, how much is going to be, you could move it all towards just replacing the police that we have now and do nothing to improve the situation with mental health and drug addiction and so on. So we took that out and we don't now do mental health or drug addiction. So that money for exactly is all new spending, simply it's not, essentially it's not what the state can do, they neglected it, but the need is still there, so unfortunately it falls on us and that's the impetus for a lot of the literature.
And then Fred, do you want to talk about tax cap or are you good on yours?
No, I think we've had that discussion.
Thank you. Then on the Y end, so I just wanted to be clear, Mr. Dyson's proposal is the one that ends after six years and his proposal takes two years to ramp up and then ends after six years. So I think it's proposed at the end of 2028, I believe is the year. Then my proposal does not, does not have an end date and I do not believe the proposal by the Salatell, Mr. Wellington, has an end date as well. I don't know if the others want to add one back.
Yeah, so the six years is completely arbitrary. I tried to figure out how long it's going to take to get geared up for new police officers, probation or prosecutors and so on, and then to, and to have an impact and so on. And at the end of the six years, there's so many things we don't know. Will the state get back to doing all the felonies? Will they be funding the treatment centers and so on and so forth? And more prison beds that we, they're short of even now, do some dumb decisions. And will the troopers be equipped to take care of that which they've been doing, which has been white collar crime and those kind of corruption things and so on? They're so stretched. So four, five or six years from now, seven or eight, we'll have a much better picture of that and we will have a better idea. And I think we'll have seen the amount of crime going down and we probably can reduce some, some services we need, you know, the cops and so on. No promise, I don't know what the future is like even tomorrow, let alone eight years from now, but not, and if we decide that we like the sales tax, or at least it's a way to get these things done that we need to do, then you all can decide whether or not to extend it. But you're in control of starting it and if you've got a better idea, get it out, this is my best, but we're, you, we the people are in charge of starting it and seven, eight years from now, if it's worked and we're satisfied, we can continue it some way. That's, anyways, that was my thinking.
So the next two questions, I think, are for your proposal, Fred. So first, if you want to speak anymore to the exemptions on your sales tax.
No, I, I really started with a sales tax effort that was done by Bill Evans here a few years ago and it was really well done and there's a startling number of exceptions in it that have precedent in other areas and so on and so forth. But basically, all the basic living things are exempted and, and that includes, you know, utility bills and all those kinds of things. So it's, the best I know how we can do to not be regressive and still let people take care of their basic needs without paying a tax on it.
And then the next question also for you, Fred, is property tax, really, why include that in your proposal?
Yeah, that's an interesting one and I think everybody that looks at this stuff says we need to have more, a broader way of supporting government than just really relying on one tax. And, and so this is a way to do that. And kind of philosophically, I think everybody really should have some skin in the game. We all ought to be paying a little bit for our government and the services we get and so that's what, also with sales tax, you're still in some control. You've got to pay your property tax, you know, and if you don't pay your income tax, if you have income, the feds are going to get you, but you're kind of in control of how and where you spend your money and so on. And I like that individual responsibility. And I personally do not feel it's a valid role of government to be sponsoring the transferring of money from people who've got it to the people that don't get it. I think those who've got it, I actually got a little, have a great responsibility personally to help all kinds of people who are less fortunate. But I don't want philosophically, government to be participating in just that transfer, kind of a Robin Hood government. So that's why I'm a sales tax man and, but I want to protect the poor as much as we can and encourage us all to donate and help.
Next question is regarding, would its general sales tax reduce property taxes up here with? I don't know if you want to talk about that.
The answer is yes, and we've kind of covered it, but Ethan's been really quite helpful as staff. So we're going to get about 290 million is available for property tax. What we've got, what I, my bill has is two thirds of the money that comes into the sales tax goes directly to offset property taxes. And the number is a little fluctuating, but it's probably going to be $350, $400 to $800 or $900 for the average home and, and commercial property owners will get even a greater savings, but that's kind of it. And the guy that Ethan's got is the chief financial officer. We kind of agreed today, like you can imagine, when you get 30, 40 million dollars the first year to start training cops and prosecutors and putting together the mental health and stuff, can't hardly spend it all, you know, the first year, you can't spend it responsibly. So what we've agreed to, anything that can't get spent responsibly within these narrow categories defaults to the property tax, you know, and so on. So that's what, how we're trying to do it and the net is still, the city's going to get more money for public safety, property tax will go down, but my guess is all of us will pay more in sales tax than we save on our property taxes.
You know, one other thing, also, I think about, I agree about the progressivity problem of sales tax generally, approximately 15% of sales tax you pay for, paid for by people who do not live in Anchorage, as opposed to property tax, which is a hundred percent based on Anchorage property.
Good point.
Next point is a question about quantifying the costs of alcohol. And so I think the alcohol industry here did reference a study that was done to help, to help assist quantifying. And so I guess there are too many reasons why I, I didn't think about it first is, so in the municipality, it's expected based on a study that is roughly about $750 million annual cost based on alcohol misuse. And so, one, it's a number that the industry refutes, they don't believe that number. And then two, just based on all the research and polling that's been done, it, it isn't the number that convinces people to support the tax. It might convince a certain segment of the population, but it certainly does not convince the majority of the population that we should have an alcohol tax because alcohol is costing $750 million annually in the municipality. That's just the logic behind that.
It costs us how much?
$750 million annually, that's within the municipality and then I think the study statewide was something around $0.5 billion.
Is it, whatever numbers are on prescription drugs, are made of use?
It just looked at alcohol, that study, yeah.
And that 750 million in terms of services we're trying to provide or?
So it looked at everything, it looked at government, it looked at personal expense and societal expense, because we know when someone dies because of a car accident because of alcohol misuse, there's all kinds of trigger effects that go into that. And so I would, I would read the study if you ever want more information.
And how do you know what the cost is, the first one is?
I would, I would read the study, yeah. So we can, we can find a way to post a study for those interested who want to look at it before we do. But again, it's, again, one of the reasons why I haven't mentioned it myself. So there was a comment made about hoping that some of these things that we end up doing work and I, I just want to speak for my proposal and I'll allow the others to speak for their proposals. We certainly are hoping that what we are doing is work, is, might work. We're actually basing it on sound evidence, based research on the things that we are doing are going to help. One of the examples that I mentioned earlier was the core team, right? Quantifiable, the core team, one individual reduced the expense of the city by 500,000. So that's why in my original five percent alcohol sales tax, we're looking at expanding that, because we know that something that can help assist, save money for the city and reduce the stress of our departments. I don't know if the others want to talk about that.
So reason with two to five percent in the first year, I can come up with two percent, you know, about $5.2 million that we, we have a demonstrated need for and that will greatly improve the outcomes. We can show the marginal effect, some of that would be emergency shelter beds. We put forward 750 We put forward $750,000 in the budget to fund overnight shelter, 150 individuals from May until December. So, in 2021, we still have to figure out how we're going to fund January through April, and then continue on. And that doesn't include day services, because folks are saying, and I agree, and it's got a great, great outcomes. We need places for people to be warm and safe and somewhere to be during the day. So, those are daytime and days, and they're day shelter services. That's another, $500,000 per facility for 150 people. So, we have ready things that we just can't make happen in this budget. I tried to do a budget cut, and oh my, did I learn a lesson. That tiny little piece of a pie, when you propose to cut 2%, 1%, .7%, it is really hard. It impacts it greatly. We don't have a lot of little room in this budget. And all, Mr. Wells, I talked about some of the other things. I'm sure you want to say.
Listen, I brought a point. A point was maybe we can't solve this, and I don't think we will ever solve part of the alcoholism or drug addiction and so on, from then on, so back. But we can do a whole lot better than we're doing. This last year, I went to San Diego and toward the facility there, toward the street, you go down to Tenderfoot District, the park. I went to Portland, it's on another facility, and went to the Dagan Village where it's a legal camp, even, it's a pretty major thing. It's in LA, it's similar, and a lot of problems there. I went to Omaha. Omaha City, not the size as we are. They have a homeless issue that's somewhat larger numbers, but not too far off. You don't see it in your town. It does not define their city like it does here in those other states. They have them in control. I saw one person, I went all over that city. Saw one person sleeping in a park, and it was like, well, that's weird. We think both are normal now. One person, I saw no beggars on the streets. I found one sign that said it may help, so I know there's someone somewhere, but it does not define that city. And it's because they have the capacity to do it right. They have two main campuses, they have all the services together, overnight, they got daytime, they got food, they got recovery, they have, one has a VDA thing, another one has a store where people learn how to work and also can shop. It has a nursery, they have all these different services that they need, and it's all together in one place. It's not like we do now. You can get bed, you go over about four blocks over there, a mile over there, and maybe you get some help. But you walk into that door right there, and it works, so we'll never solve it. They still have problems. They have people in the camping area, creep, but it is not like it is here. We can get way, way better than we are, but we can't throw over the resources we have now. We need more resources. So, you have a choice. You can vote no, and we got the status quo. That's the way it is. Or you can vote yes, and we move the needle. And we can approach, but Omaha, surely can happen.
Fred, do you want to? Okay. Then next, will Girdwood receive some of the monies and services? I don't know if that was all of the taxes or just the alcohol tax, but I will say, speaking for the alcohol tax, I think it's true for all of them, yes. Girdwood, and I think, not only Girdwood, I think the state, especially when it comes to the substitute treatment and the behavioral health treatment, will benefit from the work that we are doing, which is also why we're in our legislative program that we presented to the legislature earlier this week. We asked for additional monies for treatment, as we have been doing for every year, for many years now, and in hopes that they will be a partner with us rather than asking us to go out on our own. So, yes, I think Girdwood will, and the entire state will see an impact. I don't know if the others want to speak.
It won't be in Girdwood.
It won't be in Girdwood, but we already know that in Roll, Alaska, some folks come here from Roll, Alaska, and they seek services, right? We already know that that happens. So, having it in the municipality, I don't think it makes too much of a difference whether it's in Girdwood, Anchorage, or should be accurate or Girdwood.
Talking to people with no public transportation to get there, it's a hundred buck cab there.
All right, I think that's about a point. With the basic version of the law with the public safety element, that does confuse things because you've got, you're paying waiter police here. But with that substitute version, it doesn't include the public safety, you just focus on that, the health and so on. This would not be, we hired a bunch of municipal employees to do this. Money is being done at grants to some groups that do this, and I think a prime candidate would be the clinic here, which now does some of the health services, including shelter. Right? So, there would be definitely, this provides the benefit for Girdwood to do that, to get grant money here.
And I'd also say, Girdwood, Girdwood is not in the uniform of the state, because there's a small homeless population doing some of the services.
So, can I reframe the question? The question is that, I think the municipal office is bringing up the fact that when we have people that need to go into treatment, we don't have a way to get them there, and that's the problem. It's the transportation issue. We don't have a way to transport them and get them safely, you know, safely to treatment. And when they want to go, we can't get them there.
Thank you. And I also say that that's an issue that exists in Anchorage as well. I hear that regularly, that folks have difficulty accessing even within Anchorage, the services that they need. So, it's an issue that we need to address.
And I would say that the way, at least the substitute version is worded, it would preclude creating or having funds available for that due to a grant mechanism or something else. Similarly, if there was an identified need for emergency shelter to exist in Girdwood and there wasn't place, again, it wouldn't preclude funding that opportunity. So, right now, while we have discussed things about how they are in Anchorage, I think having the additional revenues and having you come forward and say, this is our need and this is our want and our desire, and we've got the revenues to do it, I think it's close to home and as possible for folks always makes great sense. It's their community, the people in their community and type, you know, to the ties that they have.
Thank you. So, moving on, yes, ASC, by and large, was missing in this presentation, and I think partly that's because we can probably sit through another hour presentation to look at the school district's budget, and if you want to make a recommendation to the school board that they do very similar to what we are doing, and talk about their budget in town halls, I think that's a great recommendation to make to the school board.
How much is it? How much is the ASC, just to get a comparison, 500 or something like that?
It's, it's close to 50/50.
It's a little more.
Yeah. So, the school district's budget is slightly larger than the municipality's budget, but total, in total, we're talking about a $1 million operation if they do. So, there was a question, can an alcohol sales tax be used? Oh, right. So, in my version of the alcohol sales tax, we have dedicated into the charter, I don't know what the uses are, so I already went through those three uses. So, no, the alcohol sales tax cannot be used for anything else outside of those three uses. If the future assemblies did want to use it for something else, they would have to look back to the voters and ask voters' approval for spending it on anything else.
That's true for the S urgent and for Mr. Dyson's tax too. They are all dedicated taxes, meaning that they are confined within what should be put into the charter if they pass. And ASC 2019, 2025, it was 572.5 million dollars.
Thank you.
Isn't there a charter that says it has to be a 60% vote, and so, you're going to ignore that, but you're not going to ignore the charter you're talking about?
So, in my version of the alcohol sales tax, we are asking the people if they want to amend the charter at this one time for this one act. It's not, this is similar to a question I was also asked of the people and approved by people for the bed tax, right? The bed tax asked one time, do we want to reduce this threshold to 50% plus one? The voters said yes, fine, we'll produce it, and they approved it. And so, it's the same question. Also, want to note that there was a court case that basically said, did analysis of this and said, actually, the charter does not fit with the last constitution when it comes to this, and should, the charter should be changed. And that just hasn't been done yet, but the court case has laid out pretty in detail that 50% plus one is actually what's required.
The state constitution says if you want to do a charter change, it can only be a 50% vote. So, if you want to do a charter change and dedicates funds in the charter, anything, it has to be a 50% vote. If there's anything in the charter that says there's a 60% vote, you have a conflict between what the municipal charter says and what the state constitution says. And when you have that conflict between the state constitution and the local charter, the state constitution prevails. And that's why when you say you're going to go 50% for a charter change, we've got something that is constitutional, man. 50% of people have to approve. 50%, you cannot change that number. Are they two different questions on the ballot, or is one automatically making the other one?
Yeah, so, so the questions are cool. So, the question will be two parts. One, do you approve reducing it for this one question for 50%? And two, do you generally support it?
That's a good question, and both the S version and the Dyson's version retain that 60%. What they said is true, is that 50% plus one is the rule. But it says in our chart that we don't want a sales tax unless 60% vote for it. So, in the S version of the alcohol tax, it retains that 60%. So, if we don't get 60%, we don't.
Thank you. Then next, there was a question around seasonal tax, and the mayor responded to that. There's a lot of legalities around it. I think there are members who have explored how we can get around those legalities and haven't been fruitful in that discussion. Additional, next question was regarding additional funds, and so, it's clear in my version and S, one version that's going to be coming out tomorrow, that yes, which, yes, our intent has been from the beginning, and we're just making it very clear in the language, that this is additional. So, we're not going to be just adding more money and messing around with the cards in our deck. We're actually going to be adding new cards in our deck. So, there's going to be additional funds outside of what is currently being done in the budget. And I think that's the case also for, what else? The Dallas version and the case for the sales tax, the S sales tax. Okay, so, this next question on one of these proposals, I think everyone might want an opportunity to comment for that one. I will say, it's been reported in the media that it is my opinion that we should only vote one of these proposals before the voters, primarily for the reason that was stated, that if we put more than one proposal, that the likelihood of both of them being voted down increases substantially. If we just put one well thought out proposal, then the likelihood of it actually passing, I think, increases. Other members will have opinions.
I'm going to show my charts here a little bit for what I was planning for tomorrow. I'm going to go home after this and make a chart of all three proposals and where they intersect. They are all somewhat very similar. We are very similar goals here, and I'm going to do my best to convince my colleagues that maybe if we put our heads together tomorrow, we have three work sessions on the three proposals, that we can come up with one cohesive proposal, because I think we're all driving at the exact same thing here. We all know the need. We're not that far apart, whether it's percentages or uses, or, you know, one's a sales tax, one's an alcohol tax, but I think we need to really put our heads together and see if we can reconcile these things. Because I would like to see one successful proposal because the need is great, and we need the revenue to address the need.
Is it a range of what they say?
Will anyone else?
Yeah, let me, this fascinating question. The bill I have proposed on the sales tax literally sells, says in it, if an alcohol tax is passed, that there is no sales tax in addition to this alcohol tax. So, if the voters, we put it on the ballot, the voters defeat either of the alcohol things, there will be a 3% tax on alcohol like there is in food and everything else. Right or wrong, but that's the way it's written now. So, that's the way it is. And just an interesting ethical question here. One of the reasons that I want the criminal justice system to work is we the people need to kind of have confidence that the criminal justice system works. Not perfectly, but it works. We've got lots of holes in it. Same true, and some of your comments here, yours and yours, just this underlying idea that you can't trust government, and they're all going to do bad things. And the auditors we have, if you're smarter than them, we'd be glad to have you, hire you to figure out if somebody's cooking the books. And, you know, I've got spies out in the organization trying to figure it out, but if you know somebody is being crooked, I still have contacts in the FBI, is there a public integrity section? Be glad to sic them on whoever you find is cooking the books and stealing the money or switching between it. So, but, so John and Megan, and what they're doing, in order to continue to show or build confidence, is to stick what the people of Anchorage said, and it takes 60% on these things. And mine does too. That doesn't invalidate what Ethan said, which is accurate, and what Felix is trying to do, but it's a nod in favor of kind of being, going with what the people said and try to build that trust there. And I think, I'm not, it's not at all sure that my colleagues are going to put my proposal on the ballot, and I wouldn't bet that it's going to pass, but we're trying to identify the problem, marshal the resources, go through the process, and get it done straight out.
Well, Fred, I got to tell you, I'm a little surprised that you deviated from the original intent of the constitution since you were there when they voted. How much you aspire to see your parents in Girdwood? So, Girdwood, we're in the own tax system, district, I'm aware of the municipality, based for a law enforcement agency with dedicated tax base, so the Anchorage Police Department, right? And we have here to recall your fire department, the police, pay for our services and so on and so down. So, two of the three proposals specifically reference dedicating funds for public safety and first responders, or I call them off words, right? I guess my question for the present sponsors, and I think it's a question trying to ask is, on the sales tax, we certainly receive property taxes from my house, right? But under either of those, my concern would be that either a third of it or a portion of it for public safety and first responders may not make its way all the way back to Girdwood. All right? So, I guess my question would be, is somebody going to be decadent to Girdwood Valley Service Area or to harm first responder and law enforcement fighter, or what do your police do?
It depends on the amendment. The amendment, I don't know.
And so, that was my guess, I'm going to make the same comment. And I would, well, I would support the one that Esper and John, they do, because we're going to be paying sales tax for police services in Anchorage, and we've been forced to pay for all police services here. And now, we're going to be paying for police services in Anchorage, and if you want the other services that we pay for that we don't get, we don't really get, the other services, the other million we don't get, we think we should deserve. Maybe the bed tax, or the area light tax, EMS, two places.
Yeah, and frankly, I didn't think about it, and I think John and Susan probably can figure out what to do, but nothing we do is going to be perfectly fair. Let me tell you about E. Orger's relationship with Anchorage. We send them the best water in the state, and they send us sex offenders and garbage.
There was one last question here, and then I do think we need to probably back things up, so if we have any kind of question in the audience, so, probably the twentys. So, short answer is, no, some of these sponsors have decided to put it forward. We won't know though, in finality, until the meeting of January 14th, so on Tuesday, a member could decide to lay it out on the floor, and then it will be introduced, and then up for vote on January 28th. So, I won't have a final answer. So I won't have a final answer until Tuesday, depending on what the members decide.
Does everyone know what Project 20s is?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll give a brief overview. So essentially, it is a 3% sales tax that would be dedicated to specific projects. It would be term limited to essentially raise, I believe it's $375 million for projects that are already pre-selected around the community. So there's some in downtown, there's some in Eagle River, there's some on the hillside. I don't remember if there's any in Girdwood or not, but we can find out.
Ever so.
But essentially, it's a termed sales tax that would expire once it raises the amount of money that it would cost to build those specific projects.
So just as a comment again, we pay a large bed tax in our community, and we would not get any compensation for that bed tax in that proposal. The hotel and all the communities and everything they have here.
Thank you. On your, on your sales tax, have you thought about putting a limit on the amount? When somebody buys a new car or truck, you're going to spend $3,000, $4,000 if they buy a new piece of equipment that's $100,000. What's going to move the dealer outside of the city to be able, now I can sell you a car, $4,000 cheaper than they can in town?
So the way it was drafted is 200. Today, we moved to 10,000.
So it's capped at 10,000?
Yeah.
So it's only, you only tax the first $10,000 of the purchase, and after that, it's not taxed. See, Keen Eye and Borough did it, and they capped it at $500. So everybody would drive to Anchorage to buy a car, and it'd pull our dealerships out of business.
Yeah, and and I don't know what the right number is. And if you do, I appreciate the help. Because I really wanted to not penalize and, but, yeah, and not make, not incentivize people cheating.
They're just going to go across the line, they buy it, they're going to open another dealership or whatever just outside the municipality in the lower tax zones, they don't have to pay sales tax.
Yep.
And so your businesses in town are going to suffer because of that, because they're going to go, people are going to buy.
My question is, if for some reason, any one of your versions of tax is passed, not yours, Fred, because it has a sunset clause, right? If you guys wanted to increase the tax, are you going to have to go to the voters, or are you going to?
That's one of the advantages of leaving the charter.
Well, you include your property taxes all the time, but that I'm asking.
Well, when I challenge that, actually, there's a tax cap in your charter. And as you saw, it puts a serious constraint on how much we can collect the property taxes. It's in the charter. So your property taxes go up with the time, and it's very constrained, and that's why we're here right now.
But just for reference sake, the mill rate that we have now is sort of the average of what you have been doing.
So I want to go ahead and wrap things up. I want to thank everyone for attending the town hall today. Truly appreciate your feedback and engaging in this tough dialogue. We all came here today because we cater and we want to ensure future generations of residents in the municipality have as much opportunity as possible to enjoy their lives in schools. This conversation today was a good start to continuing dialogue. We hope to maintain with residents in the municipality. The issues we face aren't going to disappear in a year, and maybe not even in five. By working together, we can continue making progress to keep the municipality moving forward. So please continue having your conversations in coffee shops and around the dinner table. And the next time we offer these opportunities for dialogue, and I hope we do, we hope you come back. Two final things before we close shopping. First, if you haven't voted yet, please see one of our volunteers and vote on your way out. Your feedback is important to us, and we are deliberating on Tuesday, to which everyone is invited to attend. The meeting will be at the Assembly Shangers, the Busac Library. Meeting starts at 5:00 PM. Other hearings, they get a note earlier than 6:00 PM, but I don't want to bring up startup hearings until about 6:30 PM. You can pretend to do it, email us at www.mas@here.org. Thanks, everyone.